Take a look at the hearing procedures on the screens. Okay, while she's doing that, I will be submitting my written decision within five business days of this hearing. Are there any changes to the agenda? And are there any changes to the September twentieth twenty twenty-three minutes? No? Okay, then I approve those minutes. Okay, so today we're going to start with file V zero zero one one dash two three, a variance bulk increase. The applicant is requesting a two hundred and five percent bulk increase of an existing structure, a one point seven five foot set setback from the street where twenty-five feet is required and a one point four foot setback from the property line where five feet is required. The parcel is owned recreation. The project is located off South Granite Bay Road in section sixteen Township sixty-one North Range Four West Boise Meridian. And I continued this file from September twentieth twenty-three and asked that the applicant meet with Roden Bridge to mitigate the public safety concerns that Roden Bridge had presented in their comments. And I have no conflict of interest. And what do we do now?
This file was continued, so staff doesn't have any other presentation other than what we had last two weeks ago. So if you want to just open it up for the applicant to make any other
Okay.
comments back to you on what you requested.
Great. So at this time, if you could please state your name for the record.
Sure, Scott Upford, I'm the representative for the Brados. Can I give you this?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
So I did meet with Matt at Roden Bridge. I don't know that I would say he would change his opinion on anything. But we did try to address some of the issues that we had with the lower windows and then also the building. So we took out the lower windows that faced the street. We also added some corrugated metal to mitigate any damage that might be done from from rocks or snow being pushed against the building.
Okay, great. That looks good. And I think that pretty much covered the issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So do I need, I need to go back to the original staff report then, correct?
Yeah.
With the motion.
Given there's additional evidence that was brought forward in the modification, you might want to open up for public comment to see if anyone has any additional comments.
Okay.
This evidence.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, I, oh, I guess I should probably read the rules of testimony then. Okay, so rules of testimony, please, you will be asked to state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person, so they may have up to six minutes to speak. No one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement. No need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed either. And I also want to ask that you mute your cell phones. We have had times of public testimony where someone's uh, security door thing went off and all I could hear was the dogs barking in the background and it was overshadowing the public comments. So I would ask that you please mute your phones this time. Is there anyone that has a written statement that they would like entered into the record regarding this application at the moment? Okay, any supporting public testimony in person or online? Any neutral public testimony in person or online? Any opposing public testimony in person or online? Is there anyone in the audience who did not speak up or sign up to speak? Who would like to enter any comments into the record? Okay. Okay, then I guess you don't have anything to rebut. All right, that works good. Okay. I approve this file, V zero 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 one one dash two three, for a two hundred and five percent bulk increase of an existing shop, one point seven five foot setback from the street where twenty-five feet is required and a one point four foot setback from the property line where five feet is required. Finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was repaired and testimony received at this hearing, including this additional evident. I want to say this, including this revised building plan. I further adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property. The conclusions are conditions apply to the property that do generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity. I think I just read that wrong. No? Okay. It's written differently. Okay. Which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control? Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The granting of this variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel or lots. Okay, at this time, I close file V zero zero one one dash two three. All right. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to file C U P zero zero one three dash two three, a conditional use permit. Public community facility and retreat. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a private community facility and retreat. The project is twenty point zero zero six acres located in Coca-Cola. The project is zone rural five. The project is located off Rook Road in section thirteen Township fifty-five North Range Three West Boise Meridian. And I have no conflict of interest with this project.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Examiner. Alex Fan, planning staff for the record. So we're here to here file C U P zero zero one three two dash two three, a private community facility and retreat in Coca-Cola. Above, and the presentation here is the applicable standards at which this application was reviewed against. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a private community facility and a retreat. The site is located on Rook Road. The area of the site is approximately twenty acres. It is owned rural five and develops with multi-use structures. Private community facilities and retreats are conditionally allowed in the rural zoning districts. And attaches the site plan that was submitted with the file. This is an unplatted parcel. It's approximately twenty acres. It is zoned rural five and the land use designation is rural residential. Property is accessed off of Rook Road, which is a Bonner County owner maintained fifty-foot wide gravel ride. The property does contain map slopes between zero and thirty percent, thirty plus percent, excuse me. Uh, the site does contain a mapped wetland and the site does not contain any frontage on a lake. Um, the property is served by an individual well, an individual septic system, Selkirk Fire, Vista Utilities, and Lake Pandrae School, number eighty-four. Um, all services are currently serving, uh, all of these services are currently serving the residential use only on the property. Uh, this property, or this project was viewed against the hillside standard at twelve dash seven point six. Uh, the site contains map steep slopes of over thirty percent grade. Any development onsite located within or in a pro- in proximity of the areas of steep slope is required to meet the standards of B C R C twelve dash seven point six prior to the start of development onsite, which is, um, which would require a geotechnical. This is the commercial use table showing retreats that they are conditionally approved in the rural district. Um, and we will look at notes two and notes twenty-seven. Uh, note two is where access to the site is by road. The road shall be located within a recorded easement or public right of way and constructed to provide adequate emergency vehicle access, including but not limited to fire, medical, and law enforcement. Except where subject to the terms of an approved special use permit issued by a state or federal agency. Uh, the proposed commercial use is accessed by Rook Road, which is Bonner County owned and maintained fifty-foot wide gravel right away. Bonner County Roden Bridge Department reviewed the project and provided comments indicating a need for possible upgrades of the driveway, requirement of a commercial encroachment permit to access the property and a signage at the end of the driveway based on the potential traffic that may be generated with the proposed use. The parcel has an existing residential per- encouragement permit. And, um, that will also be included in the, uh, conditions of approval. Note twenty-seven is that is for the retreat. Meals, recreation, and housing may be provided for the participants during the period of the retreat or program only. Retreats shall not be used by the general public for meals or overnight accommodations. Accommodations may include a lodge, dormitory, sleeping, sleeping cabins without kitchen facilities, tents, or similar housing. Uh, kitchen and dining facilities may be located in a single centrally located building where access to the site is by road. The road shall be located within a recorded easement or public right of way constructed to provide adequate, uh, meet emergency vehicle services. Um, and, uh, the applicant shall demonstrate an adequate sewer and water provisions and fire protection are required. Uh, the applicant shall also demonstrate that there is sufficient area to accommodate the retreat and the appertunant structures so as to minimize any adverse effects on surrounding properties and will not create hazards on adjoining properties. At minimum, the property shall meet the minimum lot size requirement of the applicable district. Uh, the applicant and applicant indicates that only the attendees of the proposed retreat and the private community facility will have access to the meals and overnight accommodations. Uh, the existing residence will not be used for, uh, overnight accommodations. That was a typo on my part. As well, uh, the applicant is requesting a deviation to the standard with the request for using the retreat accommodations for the private community facility to house wedding guests. Uh, the proposed accommodations for the retreat include a dry cabin to accommodate and a maximum of sixteen guests and a lodge to accommodate a maximum of forty guests for overnight stays. Uh, the applicant is proposing a maximum of fifty-six guests onsite for overnight stays. Uh, the project proposes a single centrally located common area where kitchen and dining facilities may be located. Uh, the property is accessed by Rook Road, um, as we've gone over before, uh, with, um, uh, Roden Bridge's comment, but we also did not receive a comment from, uh, the Sable Fire District, uh, stating any objections uh, to the current standard of the road for emergency access. Bonner County Run Bridge, uh, review the project. Pardon me. Uh, the site is currently served by an individual septic system and well for the existing single family home on the property. The applicant is proposing in addition of a well and another septic system to serve the proposed uses requested through this applicant, or this conditional use permit. The proposed septic system is under construction at this time. At this time, no comments have been, uh, received from Panhandle Health District and from the Sable Fire District, uh, discussing the adequacy of the potential addition of the services on the property. Uh, Idaho Department of Water Resources provided a comment indicating a potential need for a public utility facility for a water system that may exceed certain limitations. The project as proposed shows that the retreat and all appertunant structures will be accommodated onsite to minimize effects on the surrounding properties and to not create any hazards for the adjoining properties. The site is zoned rural five and has an area of approximately twenty acres. It meets the minimum lot size requirements of the zone in which it is located. Now we look at the public use table, um, for churches, grange halls, public or private community facilities. Uh, it is conditionally allowed in the rural zone. So we will look at note three. Note three is also stating that the, um, site must be located off of, within a reported easement or public right of way. And we've established that it is accessed off of Rook Road of Bonner County owner maintained. Uh, onto parking standards, uh, we'll start with the retreat. The, uh, commercial use requires, uh, two spaces plus one space per room for rent. Uh, the proposed retreat will have twelve rooms for sleeping quarters, uh, six one-bedroom cabins, and one six-bedroom single-family dwelling for the parking requirements noted above. Fourteen parking spots are required to accommodate this use on the site. Um, for the private community facility, uh, we look at the assembly buildings requirements. I mean, it is one space per one hundred gross square feet of floor area within five hundred feet of the principal use. Uh, the private community facility is proposed to be operated on an area of, uh, plus or minus five hundred, or five thousand six hundred twenty-four square feet. The code requires one space per one gro- one hundred gross square feet of floor area within five hundred feet of principal use. For the parking requirements noted above, fifty-seven parking spots are required to be located within five hundred feet of the principal use to accommodate this use on the site. The site is sized sufficiently to accommodate the required seventy-one parking spaces, uh, fifty-seven of which should be located within five hundred feet of the designated space for the private community facility. These are the agencies that were routed for comment. Uh, we received comments from Bonner County Run Bridge, uh, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and Idaho Department of Water Resources. Uh, we received a no comment from Idaho Department of Lands and the remaining agencies, uh, did not respond. We received many public comments on this project. Some opposed, some in favor. Um, the common themes were property values, parking, traffic, noise, fear of trespassing. Um, in favor, uh, was the support of local businesses, property rights, and, uh, provides a needed service. Staff concluded that this project is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code based upon the information found in the background portion of the staff report. This conclusion is demonstrated in the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and conditions of approval. Conditions of approval have been added to facilitate the project's conformance to Bonner County Revised Code. Uh, if you have any questions for me, I can answer them at this time.
You know.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, would the applicant like to present? And please state your name for the record.
My name is Tira Bruner.
My name is Cruz Bruner.
It's okay.
I'm pulling up her, uh, presentation.
Yeah, I'd definitely go over there.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Um, my name is Tira Bruner. My husband Cruz Bruner, um, we are residents of two five seven Rook Road. We are filing for the conditional use permit, um, zero zero one three two three. Um, just a few things to cover. Um, we are actually not a vista. Um, from the staff report, we, um, are Northern Lights Incorporated. We'll go over this in our presentation. We are only asking for forty overnight guests. And our septic, we have not started anything on the lodging. The, I think that there was a miscommunication on our personal dream home being built right now. Um, our septic was just under construction and permitted, um, July twenty twenty-three. So, um, there is that. Okay. About us, um, because I think it's important for you to know who we are and what we are about. Um, we were raised here in North Idaho. Uh, we both graduated from Lakeland High School. I went on to the University of Idaho where I received a bachelor's degree in family consumer science education. Um, I went back to Lakeland High School, um, for eight years to teach. Um, giving back to the community that helped raise us has always been a part of who we are. Um, I taught, uh, during those eight years, five years of that as a hospitality and tourism teacher. Um, this was a program utilized from K-Tech, um, in Rathfry, Idaho. Um, we were at the Cordillane Resort with juniors and seniors, teaching them ins and outs of the, um, resort. The front of house, back of house. Um, and then I also taught five of those years as a student council advisor. So, um, I am used to working with the public, putting on events, and this is where I truly gained a love for hospitality and wanting to do this with my life. Our goal as a family is to work and live on our land. We provide, we want to provide our son with a lifestyle and opportunities that are rare in today's society. We want to be able to be there to homeschool him, not be torn away by a job or deadlines that we didn't create ourselves. Our family comes first, always. Our greatest goal is for our family to grow and be happy on this land. Coca-Cola is our home. Um, we fell in love with it. Our greatest goal, um, for Firebrand is, um, tied into that family goal. Firebrand's goal is to provide a space where families can create lasting, meaningful memories. And with the approval of this permit, it will not only allow us to continue operating, but enhance our ability to do this by giving families the opportunity to spend several days together and create moments that would otherwise be missed. With this approval, it also allows us to host less weddings, meaning less preparation and more time with our family. I know people are upset. Um, in full transparency, we truly believed we were compliant and doing all that we could and needed to in order to build our business. Before we even purchased the land on Rook Road, back in twenty nineteen, my husband called planning and zoning to see if we would be even be able to do what we intended to do with the land we wanted to buy. Verbally, we were told yes, and that we were excited to have something like this in Coca-Cola. We didn't start building the venue until two years later. Um, it hindsight is twenty twenty. We should have called back and seen if this was still, still applicable. So, um, we were given our violation twenty-four weddings in, um, after two years in business. Uh, since receiving the violation, we have been working tirelessly. I'm sure planning is tired of hearing from me, um, to ensure that we are compliant and with only a few minor changes to our operations currently. Um, we feel we are compliant, willing to make the changes needed to best suit our community's needs and should be granted our conditional use permit. What Firebrand has accomplished in two years. We have hosted twelve weddings in twenty twenty-two. We hosted twenty-four weddings in twenty twenty-three. We have on the books twenty weddings so far for twenty twenty-four. This is something that is needed and wanted in our community. We are providing something that, um, is unique, um, that provides excellent service in a setting unlike anything in our area. We have been published in Sandpoint Living Magazine, January and February of twenty twenty-three. They reached out to us. Um, we have not been hiding our company and what we are doing. Um, we were honored to be voted and win Pacific Northwest Weddings Excellence Award for Best Venue. Um, this was out of Oregon, Washington, and Idaho venues in, uh, those areas. Firebrand has been interviewed twice for our story as well as our unique setting. And I've not even been able to get excited about this one because we were just chosen as one of the founding fifty members for WEVA, the Wedding and Event Venue Association. We intend to hire two seasonal employees this coming season as we want to work with our with our family. We want to be able to spend more family time together. And so, um, hiring someone, two people to help this coming season would, um, help with that. And up to five more once we are operating with accommodations. When we posted about our venue in a local Facebook group, um, over ten different businesses reached out wanting to connect and offering services in Coca-Cola alone. People are wanting to live off of their land. They're wanting to make a life for themselves. Um, just to give you some numbers, couples in Idaho spend an average of nineteen thousand dollars on their weddings. This was from twenty twenty-two. If only thirty-two hundred of that came to us, then that means that fifteen thousand eight hundred is being spent in our community. Um, fifteen thousand eight hundred went into businesses in our area. On average, they spend this very close to their venue within ten to fifteen miles. Ninety-five percent of these go to small businesses such as bakeries, gown shops, florists, DJs, sign shops. This does not include what is referred to as heads to beds. People coming to these weddings needing a place to sleep and eat and entertain themselves when they're not at the wedding. Our average wedding count, we averaged about a hundred. These guests are eating, shopping, and needing places to stay. Based on this average, in twenty twenty-two alone, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. And in twenty twenty-three, three that, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred was spent in our community on just their weddings alone. For head to beds, twenty, in twenty twenty-two, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars went into. And in twenty twenty-three, over three hundred thousand. We are an uninvasive and economically, um, helping our, our, um, businesses in our area. Um, we created our own bridal show as well. Um, we did participate in one local. Um, it wasn't what we felt our, our couples needed. Um, and so ours focuses on collaboration of creatives and our goal is to uplift others and their businesses. Um, we, we really feel we try to do that. But don't take our word for it. Um, with over twenty-six, uh, five-star reviews from couples to guests to vendors, Savannah had to say, "We had an amazing, uh, wedding here, August twenty twenty twenty-two." To say this was a perfect venue is an understatement. From the beautiful lights to having everything we needed, we wouldn't have chosen anywhere else. Tira is so helpful and calmed our nerves. Uh, the whole day, she brought us all that we needed and was so kind throughout our whole process of attending Firebrand LLC. If we could get married here again, we would. Thank you for such a dreamy wedding. Tessa, Firebrand was the most perfect and magical venue. It was the best place I could have ever imagined my wedding at. Tira and her husband Cruz have done an amazing job. They have truly put the blood, sweat, and tears into their venue. They also are not just the venue owners. They are present during the whole day of your wedding, making sure all of the details are just right. They both took so much stress off of my husband's and I's day. The best way I can describe this venue is that it's a fairy tale land. The way the lights glow at night and how you are enclosed in beautiful trees all around is just straight magical. If I could be redo my wedding day, I would. I, I would choose this one, a venue, again, every single time. No doubt, I have recommended this venue to all of my friends, even the ones who aren't engaged. We have only received one bad review. I turned it in as fraudulent because it wasn't a name that we recognized or any of my brides had recognized. Once we started this presentation, the name switched to one we knew. Never has this person ever been to a wedding here. This venue is not as advertised. Why would you want to pay a big chunk of change to feel like you're in a hillbilly's backyard with a porta potty? I've been in and to at least a dozen weddings over the years, and this site is by far the least memorable. If you want hillbilly chic or refer to family members as kinfolk, this may be for you. Also, the music was so loud, I thought my ears were going to bleed. Just go reserve round lake for the day and save a boatload of money on somewhere actually scenic instead of gravel trees and a porta potty. These reviews don't come easy. Um, we are very thorough with every detail that has to do with our business, our ideal client, and our property. It is important for you to understand that we are at every event day in and day out. Um, what we currently operate, we were asked to talk about how we operate so our public understands how we get to know our brides and how this, uh, the weddings work. Um, so what we provide right now for the last two years is an outdoor ceremony and reception area. Um, we do have a bridal suite, which is a twenty-two-foot bell tent, a groom suite, which is a twelve-by-sixteen-foot wall tent. They are both for fully furnished, A C units inside, full-length mirrors, space to hang your dresses, tuxes, Bluetooth speakers, anything you would need for that. Other than a restroom, we do have three. Other than a restroom, we do have three porta potty, portable restrooms located elsewhere. So two standard, one handicap KG and T local. Takes care of those. A fifteen by eighteen foot dance floor, tables, chairs and linens rentals are provided by us, but laundered by New Way. New Way Dry Cleaners in Sandpoint. We meet with each couple three to four times before their wedding date. This does not include emails back and forth, client questionnaires and interactions through Instagram. Our ideal client loves the land and surrounding areas just as much as we do, and we ensure that. So they go through a venue tour one to two times. Oftentimes, your engagement season is from Thanksgiving to New Year's, and so they are seeing our space in the snow. And so they come in the spring just to make sure it's what they thought they wanted. Final walk-through, a rehearsal and then their wedding day. We are trying to attract the ideal client and we feel that we have, we have been very successful at that. Communication with our clients via the venue tour. This is the first time I'm meeting them in person and can, can get a really good feel as to whether they're a good fit for us. We cover everything. We pride ourselves on transparency. And so we cover the max guest count, their timeframe that they're allowed. So ten AM to ten PM cleaned up and out by that ten o'clock time. Music ends at nine thirty. Again, we always evaluate what worked and what didn't work that season after. With this public hearing and everything that we have heard. Moving forward, our new policy for the 2024 season and foreseeable future will be a nine PM music shut-off. My DJs are very excited. My bartenders are very excited. Bar closes at nine PM this year, but next year, eight thirty cutoff for 2024. We are adamant about telling them about the noise ordinance of sixty decibels at the property line. No fireworks, sparklers or rice. We do offer a parking attendant, my lovely husband here. And this is for numerous reasons. One, it's to ensure we accommodate all of the cars that we say we can. If left to their own measures, that would not happen. Two, we call them VIPs, so he oftentimes asks guests, do you have any VIPs, anybody that is elderly? They are able to drive all the way up to the ceremony site, drop their guests off and then park. And then three, he is able to see every vehicle that comes on property and then is able to direct them to where they are to go up the hill to the venue. Respecting neighboring properties. My, my clients, my couples know me. They know our story. They have followed along and they understand that we are living on, off of the land. We live there too. And so they are very respectful of the property. We inform them that a Firebrand associate or approved vendor must be with them when photographing off venue grounds, meaning off of the ceremony and reception site. I am with them. Or a chosen photographer is with them, knowing outside of our marked venue area. Venue package and what is included. We are a husband and wife team. We don't have any helpers just yet. We do have a friend that comes and helps with the back-to-back wedding weekends, but we are hauling the tables, chairs, linens ourselves. And so when they get here on their wedding day, tables, chairs and linens are set for them. They only need to add centerpieces and their entry table decor. Florists usually take care of the arbor. Why this is important to you is there isn't a need for them to come back the next day or other vendors coming the next day, other than to maybe pick up a golf cart if they rented one. What you're hearing is us going back and forth from our home to our venue. We also take care of their trashes, so no trash is being strewn from the back of trucks on their way out. Final walkthrough communications with clients. This is probably one of my biggest things that I take care of. This appointment happens four to six weeks before the wedding. Before they step foot on property again, we have sent them out a questionnaire that asks them anything from their Instagram handles to who their vendors are, to also what their family dynamics are. We truly try to understand what our day is going to look like before our clients and our couples get here. This is one of the most important days of their lives and we want to provide a service that shows that. We don't get a second chance to change this. We don't get a second chance if there are things that go wrong. And so it's important for us to, to know all that we can. With this, we reiterate everything that was covered in the venue tour because again, some book really early. I have a few clients that booked in twenty twenty-two for a twenty twenty-four wedding. So it just refreshes their memory. Vendor list and add-ons. This allows us to see who will be on property and at what time. As the owners, we greet each vendor and show them where they should be and what we expect from them. Add-ons are also discussed here. Inclement weather, we are an outdoor venue. We provide a table or twenty by twenty tent over dance floors, additional lounge set rentals and content creator. This might seem silly to bring up to you, but for me, again, this is once in a lifetime. This is a moment, a milestone in their life and with the content creation as an owner, I'm able to be a part of their day even more. I'm there all day capturing behind the scenes footage and candid moments throughout the day. Site plan is also super important. The couples love it because they get a visual of what, where things are at. They're also able to send this to their vendors. And so the vendors know exactly where they're to be. We map out a plan for their tables, chairs and linens as well as vendor placement. But for us, this gives us the visual for emergency evacuation plans. This shows us, we know their guest count. We can already judge a month before how many cars are coming onto our land. We can judge, you know, where place that, where placement of things are. So we are always thinking of potential emergencies. We do live out a ways. They are also shown location of fire extinguishers. And there are one in each wedding suite, one next to the restroom and one behind the DJ booth. We'll reiterate this again, but twenty twenty-four, we will be a no smoking establishment. We'll explain why later. Timeline, this is vital for us as owners as we live on the premises and are able to monitor the day's activities from start to finish. Primarily focusing on when couples would like to take their photos at the ridge. As noted in the venue tour, they understand that someone has to be with them. Rehearsal. This is the first time many of the immediate family are on property. We take this as an opportunity to get them up to speed as they are the people who help facilitate their day. Everything we spoke to the couples about on the tours, we cover at this time. Some additional information that we've discussed with them via email and at in-person is, do they have a wedding day lunch plan? It is a long time from when they are on the property to when dinner is served. We know what happens with bridal parties. And so we recommend that they bring a small lunch tray, so people are eating if they are drinking. Do they have enough waters for each wedding suite? We want to ensure everyone is hydrated, but also we do not have anyone use our private well water unless they absolutely need to use it. We have had some fill floral vases or shaping dishes occasionally. We also provide them with numbers of waters needed for their guest count to ensure hydration. Two-hour rehearsal provides them time to practice their professional. But also while they have lots of helping hands, we have them bring everything but ice. So the Friday or Thursday before a wedding weekend, we do have quite a few people up at the property because they are, you know, bringing up decor, dresses, tuxes, drinks. This allows them to have a stress fee of a day free as a, of a day as possible. Wedding day finally arrives. Preparation for this, six AM, we begin wiping down chairs and tables. Seven AM, we use a battery-powered hand blower to blow walkways and dance floor. Eight AM, we bring out linens and decor they are using from our inventory. And by nine thirty, we are turning on bridal suite generators. We do run off of two small generators for that bridal suite. Full transparency, we are driving our personal vehicles to and from our storage unit, which is by our home, our camper to the venue. So both of our vehicles going up and down a few times. Pre-ceremony, I am up at the venue site greeting couples and their parties as they first arrive. Tending to the vendors as they arrive according to the timeline. I have, we start testing the DJs' music levels with decibel readers. And Cruz begins parking duties one hour before ceremony or when designated. We often suggest parking attendants begin when the majority of their families are arriving for photos, as this tends to be the majority of their guests. Reception, at this point, all vendors have arrived. We do a decibel check for party music and MC noise once speeches have begun. We check on the property at least hourly. We check in with vendors to identify any persons of risk so as to inform the bartender and to monitor them for their safety. We do ask for a designated person of contact for every wedding. That's part of our final walkthrough questionnaire. We have just found that oftentimes this is the matron or patron of honor. And so a lot of their guests will respect them. And again, this is their wedding day. If someone gets unruly. They are the ones that we reach out to to ensure they are sent home safely instead of us telling them they need to get into a car. This has worked out really well. They've either been sent home with an Uber or a Lyft or with other family members. And then before the last call for alcohol, we asked that the DJ announces that if guests need to leave a vehicle on property in the parking lot, they are able to. We would much rather have a car sitting in our parking lot or two than to hear of a tragic story of them not getting home safely. At this time, crews, patrols, property lines and parking lot as the majority of the guests are leaving after cake cutting. I would say at the end of the night, we are left with maybe twenty-five to thirty percent of the guest count at the send-offs. Cleanup, nine thirty PM, turn on floodlights at the reception area to allow easier cleanup. Tira is up with wedding party to keep them on schedule to be out by ten PM. But life happens. Car keys get misplaced. Alternative transportation needs to be arranged. Some nights, we do have four to five cars still there after ten PM because they are either have gotten a different ride, an alternative ride home, or vendors such as DJs are often times here later than that ten PM. But we hope that cutting music off at nine PM next season, this will alleviate that. That by a bit. All right, proposed. So nothing has, has happened with the proposed lodging. What you will see in pictures are, we do not have floor plans drawn for these, but hopefully the pictures will give you a good idea of the aesthetics and the nature of the buildings that we want to build. Logistics. This was questioned a lot and we already have been in business for two years. Our outdoor ceremony and reception areas have worked really well. Our intent with this property has always been to provide a space where families can gather for a weekend full of memories. We are excited to add this next chapter to our offerings. What we propose is an extension of our current road to the center of our property where lodging will be located. This was already a logging road. And so we will just continue in those, those tracks. One main lodge to accommodate a maximum of sixteen guests. This is where we also want to clarify forty guests is what we want. We don't want to deal with any more. Six dry cabins to accommodate a maximum of twenty-four guests. A community kitchen and bathrooms, as stated before, will be located in the lodge to serve both the lodge and the six dry cabin guests. Waste water management and water usage recommendations and guidelines will be followed. We will be getting permitted on anything that we, we build. Adequate parking will be provided per the plan and per Bonner County Road and Bridges, as well as that road that we are creating, per their recommendations and guidelines. A common outdoor area of a hundred by a hundred feet will be centrally located for gathering and enjoying company. The design was created to utilize the building and natural foliage as a noise barrier. Lodging intent. Our lodging accommodations will be for event guests only. We will not be Airbnb-ing or part-time rentals. Not only does our venue create a center for the community where memories are created, adding a lodge opens up the ability to do smaller scale events such as celebrations, graduations, nonprofit events, community markets and so much more, if the community so chooses. So this is a space where Coca-Cola as a town could utilize four different means. Our weekends will be focused on weddings or corporate retreats, but just the weekends. Currently, we can host two weddings a weekend. With the addition of the lodge, it is our belief and intent to have less weddings by booking only one wedding a weekend and having the guests stay at our accommodations from Friday to Sunday. This means less traffic than previous and less noise. Safety precautions. We will be going over safety precautions for our private retreat. But for the lodging, just some, some things to like really solidify. Fire, at no time will wood burning fires be allowed. We will provide a natural gas table alternative in a safe designated area. Trespassing, we are having the rest of our property lines surveyed and staked for fencing. Once done, fencing and signage will be posted outside of what is posted for our venue area. Noise, being centrally located, having the buildings and foliage as buffers, as stated, provide adequate noise screening. Guests will be informed and be required to adhere to noise ordinances. Guests can have no DJ, PA or loudspeakers at lodging site. What we've learned. I am a teacher. I am a constant educator. I want to learn more. I, I am also a people pleaser, so I want to make sure people are happy. Let me pause this real quick. Okay, so with noise, that is our biggest concern. We have been open in the community about who we are and what we are doing. We have provided our personal information to reach out with issues or concerns regarding noise. If you contact Firebrand Coca-Cola on my website, on our Google, Google page, that is my personal cellphone. I have it on all the time. We have, we only learned of noise complaints when our, we ourselves called the sheriff in regards to an issue we were having with our own neighbor. As a business, we were not notified by any community member or the sheriff when complaints were called in. We didn't get a call from them. Once we learned of these complaints, we quickly developed a plan for our twenty twenty-four season. Beginning twenty twenty-four, we will be contracting our own DJ service, Ruby Frog Entertainment. They have been in business for eighteen years. They are voted Cordillane Press number one DJ company for the past nine years. And the times you didn't hear music when we actually had an event was when we had them out. They are professional. They are respectful of our requests and concerns regarding our neighboring properties. And we feel they are the best fit for our business. This will ensure noise compliance from our DJs. And having had a few of their DJs out this season and the owners themselves, we know we can trust that they will keep the volume where it needs to be. That was concerning to me. I would tell them, you need to stay here. I'd have our decibel reader as I'll show you here. And then they would turn it up. You can see forty-nine point four. I think it jumped up to fifty-three. I don't think you can hear it, but when there is an issue later on in the video, the MC oftentimes is the loudest. And he instantly radioed me. We have radios back and forth and he went up and spoke to the DJ. So we are in, we are walking our property constantly. We will continue to modern, monitor noise with this decibel readers and keep the levels below sixty decibel at the property line, even with this. This contract. So traffic was the next concern and I am so excited because I want a stop sign at our, our, our road too. So compliance of traffic, leaving the venue, not stopping in the driveway and pulling out onto Roof Road without yielding to traffic on the road. We will take Bonner County Road and Bridges recommendation to place a stop sign at the end of our driveway. It's in our Amazon cart right now. With the twenty-six percent increase of daily traffic per twenty-ten, a thirteen-year-old traffic report or count, the road is sufficiently ready to accept this additional traffic. I did make a mistake. I did state that it was a hard surface. In fact, we are a gravel surface for Roof Road. So I apologize for that. We agreed to help with additional maintenance if needed of a roof road up to our driveway, which will definitely benefit our neighbors to the east of us. Trespassing. And this was a concern of many. Guests, all guests are required to stay within the parking lot, ceremony and reception areas as stated and as signage tells them at the, at our venue. At no point should any guest be wandering aimlessly. Cruz and I patrol the, this to ensure. Wedding direction signage, we do provide the couples a twenty-four by thirty-six marquee sign to show wedding guests where to go. This sits on our property in front of our mailbox. Unfortunately, Amazon, Etsy, every Google search you do for wedding signage is against us. Literally, they have directional signs everywhere that basically is telling brides and grooms, put signs on the roads. Any other signage is not put out by us or directed to be placed by us. In fact, my husband, after events, if it states. Who it was, if he knows that it's the, you know. The Brunners that just got married, he pulls them off of the road for them if they don't. So it's something that we're struggling with. But fence, we are creating a low fence around perimeter. As you see in red here on the site plan, a larger ten foot fence indicated in red as a noise and visual barrier. For not only our business, but for personal reasons. All right, property value. Again, these are just. What aesthetically we are hoping to provide. Historical data shows that wedding venues adding to the tax pull in county increases property values in almost every rural area. When looking at value, areas with new public, commercial or residential developments. Impact the desirability of the surrounding areas positively. We feel the aesthetics and what we intend for the land. Will have a very positive impact on property value. Fire safety. We do not allow fireworks or sparklers. This is from one of our former brides who also happens to be. Carrie Maddox of Idaho Panhandle National Forest Public Affairs, just stating that we are one of the most fire. Safety oriented people. She knows we lost our home to a fire in twenty eighteen. It is not something that we take lightly, and we are very cautious with our fire safety. That doesn't mean that we we don't have working fires to eliminate waste on our property. But every time there is a permit. So non smoking, I I touched on this, but twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three seasons. We gave our couples the benefit of the doubt. We had a designated smoking area. Twenty twenty four season, we will be a no smoking venue as I found too many butts for my comfort. Strung lights overhead, outdoor LED lighting is being used, no bulbs are getting too hot, and we take them down in the winter. No candles are allowed. What you see here, believe it or not, are battery operated. They become a long way, and we have a ton of them. That our brides are able to use, so they still get the ambiance, but they're battery powered candles. And to touch on. One of our adjacent neighbors' main concerns. All vehicles will be parked on premise, adequate parking for all guests. None will be on Route Road. August twenty seventh, twenty twenty two was the only time we had cars parked on Route Road since we have expanded our parking to accommodate more. Negative impact of cutting down trees. We are stewards of the land. We try to clear underbrush and remove diseased trees. With the approval of our CUP and after all is said and done with our property. We will have eighty three point eight seven percent of our land still treed, which is a large percentage. Dumpster at the front of our property is for the current building of our home. This is common practice for job sites. This will be removed upon completion of our home, as will the two portable restrooms that you see from the road. Believe me, a dumpster at the entrance of our business is not something that we enjoy, but we need it to achieve the dream of building our home. Yes, we live in our camper permanently. This was questioned and it has been questioned. We have been a permanent residence at two five seven Route Road since spring twenty twenty one. Yes, we live in a camper full time, even in the winter. We still don't use our septic that was installed in July twenty twenty three. We weren't going to move our camper to. To make that work. My husband empties our waste at the fairgrounds monthly. This is one of the major sacrifices that we have made to build this dream of ours, and we finally are building it. So. You move for that. Parking. Parking lot light was installed June twenty twenty two. It's never been moved or adjusted, but we will ensure it is two specifications per code and change it if needed. We do have thirty feet of trees and natural foliage between our property line and the beginning of our parking lot. We have also left a mound of sand and dirt to help alleviate the noise. We will be building a barrier wall to cut off line of sight and deflect noise. And driveway design. Our driveway was designed per Bonner County Road and Bridges at a perpendicular ninety degree angle to Route Road. So as to as not to blind or impair traffic. This was done in May twenty twenty. We will have them out again to accommodate for commercial use and compliance. I want to thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to create and grow a thriving and much needed business in this community. It is our every intention to comply with any changes that are required to ensure that our business follows planning code. So that our twenty twenty four couples and those in years beyond can make memories at Firebrand safely.
Sorry, I do have just a couple of questions. You had mentioned that in inclement weather, you do use a tent over your dance floor. And you also were talking about your lodge possibly using it for wedding receptions. Is that something that? Would you ever consider using your lodge for wedding receptions as a part of that noise issue? Or is it not?
Like, are you saying, like, because it's centrally located, it'd be less noise for neighbors or?
I know that that is one of the continuing comments.
For smaller, the hundred by hundred is not much, not very large. As you can see in the site plan, I mean, we've spanned quite a bit for the reception area. I mean, it is something that we talked about for smaller reception.
Okay.
We would also have to accommodate for parking.
Okay.
Yeah, so that our major parking lot is not within five hundred feet of the lodge.
When you do have the bad weather and you have to use the tent, what size wedding would that hold?
Well, that doesn't hold all of them. So that's just the dance floor. We do offer a six canopy, ten by ten. Just overhead, and then we also have umbrellas on the table like that put into the table that overhang two feet. So people can sit and eat without that. And then ceremony, we have clear umbrellas, so they are able to have a picturesque setting without that.
But the dance floor is primarily where your speakers and your DJ are centered.
Well, our DJ is under a canopy of their own. It's a ten by ten, like canopy. Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm trying, I think what I'm very badly trying to get to is that when you use your tent for the inclement weather. You really are actually providing a sound buffer for that area of the dance floor where most of the noise is created. Is that?
So the DJ is always under a tent.
Okay.
He, we have their equipment always placed under a tent, just. We are very transparent with all our brands. We are an outdoor wedding venue. We. We accommodate and cater to them as much as we can. Rain happens.
Right.
We have that twenty by twenty marquee tent to go over our dance floor so that they can dance without being in the rain. Table umbrellas and then our additional canopies, which are just your basic, they're pulled out, ten by ten canopies. We have several of those to accommodate for cake tables, entry tables, things like.
I think she's thinking of sound. So we have been looking into waterproof buffers essentially. My mom actually found some that we could hang in trees. That would grab that. The problem is is with the forest, literally, we can be at different spots. And ours can say sixty, and then if you go up and over to someone else's, it's a little bit like it's louder. And so we're just following Bonner County code. But again, we have stated in lots of community outreach that. We understand that sixty decimals might still be too loud for neighboring. We have not heard from them, like, I would love for them to say, hey dude, it's too loud. Please turn it down, but we've not heard that. And so it's hard for us because we are like, we're under, we're at fifty five or we're at this. But if we don't hear from that, then we we can't fix that. So that's where, literally, when we have Ruby Frog out. You drive up, you can't, you can't hear the music. And so we know that it can happen. It's just, unfortunately, we've had some very. I don't know, some rough DJs. So now we're fixing that.
Getting to that point, when you had mentioned that you had spoken to the Sheriff's Department and found out about some of these noise complaints. Were you able to figure out that they were associated with those other MC DJ groups, not the current?
Okay, yep. So there were issues, at least with Bonner County, for that Ruby Frog. So and we just know they're professional, like, just even the way they they treat us and they know this is your your venue, like, they understand that. What their actions are doing could affect our future brides, because if we are shut down because of a noise ordinance. Then those other brides are affected. So it's really just the professional.
And then can you pull back up the site plan that shows the buffer wall that you had running alongside the parking?
We are going to put up, we don't know how tall, I I put ten foot, but we have a wall.
It'll be taller than ten feet, and we intend to go from that inside corner pin. Past our parking lot so as to cut off line of sight to the property and as a noise buffer. Like we said, we have thirty feet of foliage and it's total with the. The additional land is probably about fifty to sixty feet of undisturbed land between our parking lot and our neighbor's property.
Okay, and then that would also eliminate the issue of the headlights. Okay, same. That was.
And this is, we do have a wall at the very end. Of the ceremony, where the ceremony is and that big kind of pod is with the blue, we have a. A wall that keeps them from going on to further properties, that is a wall, that it'll be the same aesthetic. Yeah.
So what about between the reception area and the property line? Have you got any ideas?
We do not, no.
Would you be willing?
We are, we are going to be putting up a short fence, but if it became an issue, we'd be very willing to put up.
Something separate to what's in the red area there. What would it take for you guys to actually do that, to make that decision?
Make the decision, right. Well, we know the owners and talk to the owners of the land to the west of us. And so if they wanted it, then we would do that. We have had personal issues with the other neighbor, and so that is why. For my own safety and for the safety of my son, we to enjoy our land, that is needed. And my husband is in construction, so these aren't things that are difficult. We we, yeah.
We've already built a wall at the end of our ceremony. People build one in a very similar fashion all the way across.
Okay, cool. Okay. Can you explain to me a little bit more about your property signage that, I mean. Again, I'm gonna bungle through this. I have been in areas where I, when we, they've wanted to keep guests in line, they've had signs saying. Stay on trails, no trespassing.
And Firebrand, like. Because they know that we do own the rest, and unfortunately, there is a small, I call it the groomsmen trail, because they just. Pull fly down there. We do have a bridge that goes over a small creek, and not creek, it's a runoff. It's dry halfway through the season, but. We do have a bridge there and kids see that. And so it's like, nope, we have a signage that that Firebrand.
Do you have some kind of a trail system in place out there that pretty much keeps people on track or?
We do have a trail, a walking trail.
We have a walking trail, that's what I'm.
We we created a walking trail based on the skidder path that was already there.
Okay.
Like we said, when, in order for somebody to cross that bridge, they have to be with a Firebrand representative or an approved vendor, and that means. That vendor is aware of the situation. They're aware of our property borders, and they know what is going on.
But it is clear enough for our two and a half year old. He literally just says, go to the ridge, and he follows the path. So it is very, very clear.
Very well laid out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so then the only other question I think I had was regarding the lighting in the parking lots. However, that wall, so how tall, first of all, is your lighting in the parking areas?
My light is approximately twenty five feet off the ground.
Okay, and have you, are you aware of the code of the, there's a Bonner County Revised Code. Twelve dash four five three F.
And that's what.
Talks about the directional and all that, and that's what you guys are using? Okay. Okay, are you going to be installing anymore or just?
So currently, I'm going to be actually taking the present one down.
Okay.
And I will be relocating it likely somewhere here, directed that way. So as to not shine or direct any light in this direction.
And then what about that smaller parking lot? Are you going to eliminate that at all?
This, so this is a storage park, so we have a storage conex in this area. And I park my tractor under a canopy right here.
Okay.
We do park a few cars in this area, but this light will be adequate enough to supply visual aid to that area.
But we will be reviewing the code to make sure that we are, I'm assuming that we will have a representative from Bonner County out. And so that would be nice to just make sure, yes, you are, yes, you are, yes, you are, so. But yes, we've been reviewing the codes. Especially after receiving the the violation. We've just been compiling this and going through what is needed.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so at this time. Where is, we will be hearing some public testimony. I'm going to go ahead and read the rules of testimony once more. So you'll be, to start with, you need to state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person. So they have up to six minutes to speak. No one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application only. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement. No need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed either. Is there anyone that has a written statement they would like entered into the record at this time? Okay, so at this time, I'm going to call for supporting public testimony. So like, oh, you have a written statement? I'm sorry, I was too fast. Do you need to, it needs to go to her? Okay, at this time, I'm calling for any supporting public testimony in person or online. Is there anybody online? Okay, anyone in person that would like to provide supporting public testimony? Go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is DJ Johnson. I'm an MC and a DJ for Ruby Frog Entertainment, have been for nearly four years now. I'm writing you today in defense of a beloved wedding venue in our community, Firebrand. This venue has provided countless couples with a beautiful and memorable space to celebrate their love, and I believe it would be a great loss for our community. If it were to be shut down. As someone who has attended and worked multiple weddings at this venue, I can attest to the high quality of service and attention to detail. Provided by the owners. From the stunning decor to the delicious food, every aspect of the wedding experience is expertly crafted to ensure a truly magical day. For the couple and their guests. I know from professional experience that this venue ensures noise ordinances are followed. I personally work closely with the Brunners to ensure our noise noise levels stay at or below sixty decimals at the property line. I ensure that my PA system is off by nine thirty every time I'm out out at Firebrand, as they like to have everyone off the property by ten PM. I keep a decimal reader open at all times to inform me of my levels while I'm working. I also freely walk the property to make sure that the sound isn't impeding on anyone's peace beyond these property lines. I respect and understand how important it is to have minimal impact on the residents that live around the venue. It has been my goal to help provide this venue with the respectful, thoughtful and professional DJs and MCs. My company, Ruby Frog Entertainment and Firebrand have discussed contracting together to make sure that every wedding is respectable of all laws and ordinances. It is our deepest hope that we can all work together to resolve any concerns neighboring residents may have. Furthermore, this venue has become a staple in our community, providing not just a location for weddings, but also for expos where other small businesses in our area. Can come together and help future couples make their dreams come true. Its closure would have a significant impact, not just on the couples who dream of getting married there, but also on the broader community. I implore you to consider that the value that this wedding venue brings our community and to allow it to continue operating. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other supporting testimony in person? Please stand up and state your name for the record.
My name is Paige Martin. My name is Paige Martin, and I'm a local wedding planner and North Idaho native. I've been in the wedding industry for the past eight years and worked with countless wedding professionals and clients. Throughout my experience as a wedding planner, I've worked with individuals who put in limitless. Throughout my experience as a wedding planner, I've worked with individuals who've put in limit, limitless hours of hard work into their wedding business and Firebrand Coca-Cola is a shining example. I've had the privilege of meeting Tira and Cruz in twenty twenty-one, I met them in networking, at a networking meeting and was instantly drawn to them because of their drive and work ambition. Over the last two years. I've had the opportunity to know them on a personal and professional level and learn the following about them. Their economic development, Tira and Cruz are the perfect examples of business owners that should be supported in our area. North Idaho was built on hardworking individuals that love and support our community.
You made me cry.
Tira and Cruz are impeccable examples of what North Idaho and business owners should aspire to be. They have created a positive impactful business that has created an economic benefit to the Bonner County community. Their business has created a safe space for other small business vendors like myself to grow in an affirmative way. I've worked with plenty of venues in surrounding areas. Area and it's extremely important as a small business owner to have a positive venue to work with. That brings joy to both other small business owners as well as the guests that are attending their property. Their community design. Their property brings people together in an encouraging light. Their venue is more than just a wedding venue. It's a community space, their venue brings people together in a positive environment, which has resulted in healthy relationships. For numerous individuals in the Bonner County. As for the future of Firebrand Coca-Cola, with their addition of the hundred by hundred community area amongst CAGMENs to enrich the lives of the community. They've also created a space that helps promote and preserve the natural beauties of North Idaho. They truly are guardians of the land, they have designed their venue to cater to their clients while conserving, enhancing the beauty of the land. Their recreation benefit. Firebrand Coca-Cola has created a unique recreational opportunity in our area. By providing a space for people to enjoy during the numerous community events they've graciously, graciously hosted on their off days. They've also created an environment for people to enjoy as either as a guest or as a couple wanting to celebrate their marriage. I truly appreciate your time and hearing me speak on why Firebrand Coca-Cola is exceptionally beneficial to our community.
Thank you. Any more supporting testimony? Do you need a Kleenex box?
Hi, I'm Jessica Mannan. Um, as an owner of um, catering, local catering business, Grayson Rose Catering. Um, I've had the opportunity and pleasure to work with Cruz and Tara. Um, owners of Firebrand. On Roop Road Coca-Cola. On several occasions, starting at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. I partnered with the Brunners to participate in community growing events such as Bride's Day Out and my fake, fake friend's wedding. Um, which are both, um. Events to bring in brides into the area. Encouraging new brides in the North Idaho and surround us, surrounding states to utilize and contract local wedding vendors and businesses. I've also catered to several wedding couples at their property and event venue. Being a caterer and vendor to events, it is very important that the venue is clean, organized, and is designed with a proper parking. Easy access and proper sanitary accommodations. I will say that out of the many venues in North Idaho. Firebrand is one of the most pristine, well-taken care of properties I've participated at. Within their property venue, Cruz and Tara have made a point to not only ethically clear out underbrush and remove diseased trees. But also have created a landscape of bark and ground layering that protects and supports the forest's natural aesthetics, resources, and habitat. They have installed clear signage and markings on the outskirts of the venue, letting guests know not to wander or leave the venue area. Which allows all natural game trails and area to stay undisturbed. They are pre, present the entire time of each of it, maintaining noise. Sanitation and guest accommodations. They have also taken measures to minimize noise as much as possible with a set time for all music to be stopped. This is typical for all venue owners, but in this case of the Brunners, they are truly caring. And accommodating individuals and property owners. Those only want these, those that only want to grow their business, foster positive community relationships. Support other local businesses and maintain the natural state of their property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, please?
Mark Lynn Scott for the record, four seventy-nine, West Fry Creek Road, South Idaho. Um, I think staffed in a phenomenal job of presenting, presenting the file and vetting the file thoroughly. Um, I was introduced to Firebrand venue by my daughter LaShelle, who would probably get to speak, but thank you lady, she'd probably cry, isn't it for I'm here to get to speak for. So my daughter's a Tipsy Gypsy, she owns a mobile bar, she does weddings, uh, you know. Throughout Idaho, Washington, and this is a very unique uh, venue. When I heard my daughter tell me that she needed my help running up and helping her set up her horse trailer, uh, beer bar, I, I got up and I thought, well. I know exactly where I'm at, uh, my brother and I own the, all the four twenties due west of it, so I don't have the largest of. Bordering property line is probably, I'm guessing twelve hundred, twelve hundred feet, excuse me, maybe a little more, over twelve hundred feet there and uh. Um, when you'd ask about fences and things like that, I personally, because I, I've been there, I, I've been to several events there and we're not requesting anything. Fencing or anything like that.
So you would be the property owner between that parking. Right now. The little one.
Clear, to the west side, so if you look at the map, all the property to the left. Yeah, there's, I have twenty acres in the four fives. Um, uh, up through there.
Um, thank you.
I, I believe, uh, a, a retreat is an allowable use of conditionally proved, it's not a prohibited use. It is an allowable use and a comprehensive plan and code. Um, routing agencies as far as I understand have had no opposed comments to it. They are the definitive authorities regarding road and bridge and what have you. Um, see, I'm gonna bullet point this real quick. Um, I certainly hear the passion in the applicant's voices and appreciate we have some North Idaho natives trying to make a living here off the land. And I also appreciate that they use local vendors, that's it does boost our economy. Um, again, I am the adjoining landlord owner and I think the file that is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code. And I uh, do urge approval of the file, do you have any questions for me?
No, anymore. Sorry for interrupting you. And thank you for not crying. Okay, any more supporter, supporting testimony, please?
My name is LaShelle Lynn Scott, um, I own the Tipsy Gypsy, which is a mobile bar. Um, to be completely honest. I love these girls, I love them. What I wanna say to you guys, the people who are not in the wedding industry, you hear our passion because we see. The love. That they are able to, to give to every single, you know, bride and groom. Every single person who steps on that property that is instantly in love with the property. You, not being in the wedding industry, it's hard to be like, this is the passion that we are showing. But the thing is, this is my first year in business, I've been to well over twenty-five different venues. Um, with over half of my weddings being at Firebrand for this season. I have seen great venues, I've seen venues that aren't so great, and I'm not just saying aesthetically. Aesthetically, this is beautiful, but I understand you guys aren't, aren't here, you know. Saying opposing the beauty, because if you guys are neighbors, we all live in North Idaho, we all love it. What I'm getting at, I've been to venues where they say, okay, nine o'clock is last call, people are still partying at ten o'clock. I one hundred percent understand your guys' concern. My dad and uncle own the acreage to the west of it. He has specifically said, what if you live there, do you want to be hearing, do you want to be seeing a wedding every single weekend? And I understand your guys' concerns, but what I'm saying, when they're telling me. To be done at nine o'clock and have a last call at eight thirty, Tara and Cruz are specifically coming to me saying, last call, we're done. And it's not, it's not for me, it's not for everyone else, it's for you guys, it's for you guys as the neighbors. They understand what it means to be a neighbor. They wanna go to bed at ten o'clock, you guys wanna be in bed not adhering to something they, I understand that. So not just coming from someone who's a vendor, someone who is a North Idaho native. My dad owns the adjoining property, if someone who adjoins a. Owns adjoining property is saying, let's do the thing and isn't in compliance with Bonner County. I don't see the issue personally. Tara and Cruz are wonderful people, they're wonderful natives, they're wonderful neighbors, they're wonderful natives. Of North Idaho and I think by having this is only a blessing to several couples who want to. Be there to get married, they're just wanting to, to share their land and the passion that ultimately is the reason we all live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other supporting testimony? Oh, one, one online too, okay.
Hello, my name is Sharice Youngdale, I am Tara Brunner's mother, speaking in support of this, the CUP for the event. Center, um, I've had blood, sweat, and tears on that land too. We helped them. Grow the wedding part of it for her wedding in twenty twenty-one. Tara's always been in the industry of hospitality, even as a little one, she was always a peacemaker, really always wanting to make people happy. To speak to the economics of having this in Bonner County, I know I never used to come up to spoke, to Sandpoint, I never used to come this way. Quite frankly, I'd probably just come to her house if she didn't have the, the venue, but we now come into Bonner County, we. Spend money here, I spend it and take it home to another county, so I am part of the economic growth. Of, of this, as well as her uh, clients and her guests who. Spend money at, as she said, hotels, shopping, eating, recreation. They're getting to see what Sandpoint has, what's, what Bonner County has. I wanna touch a little bit on Roop Road, she said they were gonna come up here and. Live off a dirt road, I was like, oh, dirt roads, they get ruddy. She's like, yeah, this is where we wanna be, and it was like, I know, I know. So as I would drive it, I would go, you know, rut, 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 rut. This is before they had anything. Um, I all then all of a sudden saw that it had been graded, this is a beautiful road. They keep it up really nice, okay, this makes me happy. One, for her safety. Uh, two, because I don't wanna take my, my car on that ruddy road, I don't live on a rut, I don't live on dirt. Um, just in the last couple of years, before I even knew about this twenty-six percent extra traffic on the road from the study. Done what, twenty-ten? I was noticing that the road actually had gotten better since twenty nineteen. I'm like, okay, they really take care of this road, this is great, so that made me feel better and again, it's just my observation because I don't like. Um, I've watched them build their company, I don't have twenty, thirty seconds, this isn't good. Um. I've watched them build it, I've watched them change it, I've watched them make tra, changes due to people who have come to them. In a polite manner to ask them to change things. Tara comes from a long. Range of people who have been married for over fifty years in her family. She knows this business, it's her passion, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Randy Youngdale, I'm the father of Tara Brunner. Um, I wanna talk about when it first started and the thought process of this whole thing coming out. Um, every one of the roads were logging roads that came into there, so they never obstructed any of the trees or any of the linings of it. Uh, they did widen, they did clean up underbrush and everything like that, including that parking lot, which was a flat area that had been cleared out. Um, they just expanded it and they made it more forest friendly. I, I remember uh, them talking to me when they had somebody come out and survey, uh, you know, for trees and everything. And they found that that property has literally every species of pine on that property. And which is something to say, and they're very conservative of, they wanna be controvert, I mean, what is the word I'm looking for? Conscientious of their surroundings and their property, and when they were building the. Reception area and everything like that, I remember them looking at the landscape and basically using what it gave to them. And they use those spots and build all of the different levels that they have, they didn't remove any of the big trees. Uh. The only thing they did is they did clear. Uh, lower branches, so the site views and everything for the reception and everything was there, including their ceremony area. They literally put tr, their chairs around the big tree, so everybody had a sight, they didn't remove the big trees, they left them there. And in their ceremony area, it's completely that way, and. I remember my daughter following me and I had uh, my trimmer and she goes, no, we're not taking the tree out. We're not taking that tree out, we're not doing this, we're not doing that, and I remember she was very conscientious of it and she made sure. That this place that they were gonna do was basically people coming into. A forest area to have their reception and have their wedding and have their dreams that they have. Because they love the property and they love the land that they live on. Um. I know. The passion that they both have, I've seen it, I've done sweat and tears. I recall she was avid about having her wedding in twenty twenty. And we literally let her know that we've only worked on this property for one summer. That we're gonna have to do it in twenty twenty-one, so we helped them out throughout the next summer till August and got it to the point. Where it's an oasis, it's a, it's a beautiful spot and I just love them both for. What they've created and what they've done and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other spring, should we do the one online real quick? Do you guys care? Do you mind, is that okay real quick, let's, let's look them, they've been. So, um, go ahead, online.
Hi, I'm Morgan Segansky, um, I was a bride August twelfth at Firebrand. And I just wanted to throw in that. They made my day amazing, um, their venue is beautiful. And the preservation of the trees and the nature is their venue. Um, it's what makes it beautiful, they were so helpful and adding this would be. Amazingly beneficial to the community, not only for the brides and grooms, but as Tara said, for the community to use their property. For community events and to uplift local businesses and local. Uh, meetings and everything like that, so. Um. Yeah, I just wanna throw that in there, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Okay, go ahead. Thank you for letting me let them get in.
No problem, thank you so much, my name is Noel Brower and I'm the owner of Noel Brower Photography LLC. Um, I just wanted to come up and speak and just attest to Tara and Cruz's. Amazing character and just open arms, uh, personally to me, I'm a newer wedding vendor, uh, in the area within the last five years. And they absolutely, um, supported me as a newer wedding venue, vendor in the area and. Um, have just included me in so many of their. Uh, just different events that they have done, not only in weddings, but also, um, being extended invites to enjoying. Uh, the bridal shows, my fake friend's wedding, um, and it's been an absolute privilege to work with them. Um, I have shot a handful of weddings at Firebrand and. As someone who has, is newer to the industry but has worked at other venues, uh, I can personally say that they truly care about. Their clients so deeply, um, just from, not only from. Taking care of the little, the little details, but, um, making sure that. The bride and groom are taking care of the whole day, that the vendors are also taking care of. Um, I can also personally attest to, um, Tara and Cruz being all over the property, almost all the time. Uh, I feel like, uh, I just see them everywhere I go and as a photographer, I follow the bride and groom and all the guests all day long. Um, throughout their whole wedding day. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to come up and attest to their character, they're truly wonderful people.
Thank you. Okay, is there any more supporting testimony? Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Natasha Rup, um, the road obviously is named after my family, we are one of the first people who have lived up there and stayed. My family's been up there since nineteen sixty-four. My family's been up there since nineteen sixty four, so we've seen a lot of growth. Um, I'm excited for them to grow this part. This is awesome for them. For me, it's awesome for the community. Um, the extra traffic, I actually laughed at the thing when it like showed from twenty ten. I was like, well, we have so many people that have grown up there that they're not all driving and all the new people that have actually moved up there and live up there. So the traffic increase really isn't that much difference. And it's only at the very start of the road. I live all the way at the end of the road down there. Um, but as I say, to me, I I haven't had no problems with their wedding as a great. I say they've been great. They kept people off the road. Um, people going to their wedding and from their wedding, I've had no problems with the traffic. Um, it really hasn't changed it a whole lot because it's become a very busy road over the years. We go from when I was younger, where there's hardly anybody to now there's a bunch of people. So I mean, it it it's gonna grow and it's just gonna continue to grow as people sell property. Um, so I think that it's great that you guys are putting this out there and that it's there for the community. And I think it's a great thing for the community. Um, I say if you, when you drive by, you can't even tell there's any place down over there. So they've kept the aesthetics even from the road very nice. So you can't tell that there's a vet wedding venue down there. Um, so it just looks like a normal place. Um, our wildlife and everything else. I know people have problems with that. To me, the we still have a ton of wildlife up there. Um, it really their property has not changed anything with that. I still see deer there all the time. I actually almost hit deer there daily. Uh, there's it has not changed our wildlife as a and there's gonna be new houses and everything else. It's not gonna change anything, even just having the extra places on there. To me, it's gonna be the same. Because it's just like anybody else building on a new piece of property. Um, we've had so many pieces of the property built up there, a built up that would have been sold that I say it's just another thing. It's good for them to be able to have their own business. That's awesome. They can live off their land. Like that is everybody's dream. It's like a farmer to me. Basically what it is. Like, that's how I look at it. It's like a farm. They there you get to learn to live off your own land. I think that's awesome because I say, because I love where we live and I wouldn't trade it for the world. So it's awesome. We are able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other supporting public testimony? Okay, any neutral public testimony at this time?
Neutral.
As in you don't have an opinion either way?
Well, I have an opinion.
As long as it's neutral.
My name is Karen Benno and I live at thirteen hundred Roop Road. I've lived there for almost forty years. Um, our property is not on your map. It's further up the road. We are living on the old Campbell Homestead. Um, taught for South Side at elementary school for twenty five years, very involved in the preservation of the rural environment in the Coca Lala. Um, I understand the passion for this new business endeavor. And I'm not against it, but I just think that they need to take into consideration the um already established families that live there and show a little bit more respecting consideration for the impact of their business on 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 local um part, the property owners. I live about a half a mile from where they're at. I was going to address lights and noise, but from where I'm at, a half a mile away, when we're up at the top of our property, we can see the lights of their event um in the summertime. And depending on the direction of the wind blows, we get the the noise level that comes up. So it travels far. You can't contain noise. You can't contain lights. So they have to work on something that diminishes the impact on the surrounding area. Um, in talking with other real uh um residents of Roop Road, we've gone from three hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty down to a hundred sixty acres. Now we're down to five acre lots. And where there used to only be like twenty of us, now there's over sixty or seventy residents living up and down the road. High densities coming in and um Roop Road is a dead end road. There is no other way out unless you want to take the Genin Road fire break. Or if you go up to the top and you travel along the goat trail that leads over to Wilford. So in the event of a major um evacuation, emergency, we only have one way out. And that is to go past where the venue is at. And you'll notice on the map, there's a big curve that is the north side of it is a rock outcropping. The south side of it is a drop off. It's a blind curve. So people coming in and people going out don't see each other. And with the venue with ninety plus cars pouring out of it at any one time or people trying to come in, there's a huge bottleneck of traffic that occurs. In the event of an emergency, I our fear would be that it might possibly um affect um emergency procedures. And then which brings it to wildfires. They have to have something in place to mitigate wildfires. Our summers are hot. Our forest is tinder dry. And we've already gone through several wildfire events on Roop Road, one of them just a couple of years ago where it came up over Fish Creek. That hasn't been addressed in any of their plans. And so in order to protect not only their guests, but also the surrounding areas, they've got to take into consideration wildfire mitigation and emergency response, especially on a dead end road where everybody's gonna be trying to get out. In one small little section of the road is a bottleneck. But other than that, if they want to be respectful and consideration, they go for it.
Thank you. Um, only if you step up and to the mic and are you a neutral?
I didn't even sign up to speak, but she's. I live at the very end.
Hang on just a sec. Are you offering a neutral testimony or opposing?
Just.
Just neutral. Okay, go ahead then. Please state your name for the record, though.
Dale Roberts.
Thank you.
I live in beyond Roop Road on Psalm's Way.
Yep, when you extended it from Wilford over.
And we build a fire.
To me.
That goes out.
Can you keep the conversation to me, please?
Okay, we build the fire trail that goes on down to Wilford Road.
Okay.
So there is access out of that property.
Okay.
And uh, so I just don't really understand why that should be too bad.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, any other neutral testimony? Okay, okay, uh, any opposed? Was there any neutral testimony online or anybody online? Okay, sorry, I don't like. Not yet. Okay, all right. At this time, um, any opposing public testimony? New in person or online? Opposing, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Rob Holman. Um, so this is the first time I found myself coming to a meeting like this to voice an opinion. Uh, I'm I'm pretty much a live and let live kind of person. But I do feel that what Firebrand has done is somewhat disrespectful to to the neighbors, uh, not unto myself, but to the neighbors, and I feel obligated to weigh in. I don't think that what they're doing is adequately mitigating the impact of the surrounding properties. Um, as the crow flies, my house is uh almost exactly one half mile uh from the wooded, one half of a wooded and hilly mile um from the driveway of of Firebrand. Um, probably transparency, probably more like three tenths of a mile from the wedding venue itself. So regardless of the distance of terrain, peaceful evenings on my property are now filled with music. Uh, booming bass, sounds of DJs as recently as August. And I could actually make out the lyrics to some of the songs and I'm, you know, half mile away um from the from the driveway. Um, I'm fortunate that it only ruins my enjoyment of my property when I'm outside. Um, my neighbor across the street can actually hear the music inside his house. So uh, you know, I I only learned that the source of this noise was coming from Firebrand a couple of months ago. I had no idea where this music was coming from. So I have uh moved, had I moved into this area with a business already in place, I really wouldn't be here because you know, just like I don't think people should complain about gun ranges and and airplanes when they when they buy a house near those areas. You know, I don't feel that that I think that would apply here, but you know, this is um this is not preexisting. Um, in this case, they've moved in to a peaceful, quiet location. There's excessively loud music um multiple days a week, and it fundamentally changes the area that I live in. I I honestly, I can say I have less enjoyment of my land and my home, given what is uh um happening. Um, I have no issue with uh someone running a business, running cabin rentals, Airbnbs, that kind of stuff. I just oppose uh someone moving in, opening up a business that can negatively impact so many people over such a great distance. I just think it shows a bit of disrespect for neighbors. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other negative um opposing, sorry, public testimony at this time, please?
Hi, my name's Forrest Walker. I live across the road. If you look at a map, there's a small road that says Bergamot Drive right off of uh Roop Road. When I heard about a wedding venue coming in, wasn't opposed. Weddings are pretty. I've been to four this year. Yeah, we're all at the age where I'm thirty, so everybody's getting married. The only problem I really have is the noise ordinance, you know, like if I'm listening to Uptown Funk inside my house at twelve o'clock at night, it's just too loud. I see you guys have about the same rules as some of the other wedding venues I went to. All the ones that I've been to, everything's supposed to stop at nine thirty. So I was just in Denver last weekend and I was on Main Street. They still stopped at nine thirty. So I mean, even at the Gorge Amphitheater, they have them stop. If you go to Dave Matthews way out in the middle of nowhere, there's always a noise like time that that has to be done by. And you know, if I didn't even know what was going on, if it didn't impact me noise wise or anything like that, I'd have no problem. I know understand how hard it is to start a business. It's really hard, especially this day and age. I feel for you guys there. If something could just be worked out to where we didn't, you know, it just didn't impede into the evening hours. Because during the day, you know, if it's the Saturday afternoon, twelve, four o'clock, you know, people can be shooting guns, right? Driving their tractor, no big deal. That but you know, I can, I just don't want to listen to music. Or in uh you can, I've been to morning weddings. They're really good. You can have it where you can be a um wedding ceremony place, early reception, and then just not have a tail off too late. Um, those are all good options because I've had weddings where just the reception was someplace else, outdoor weddings. Or they just, you know, end a little bit earlier. And like you said, it's usually like um bride and groom's dad or bride and groom gets a bit drunk, gets a PA late at night. Because I remember one time I was up there working on my house and I hear this guy's like, I just want to tell everybody how wonderful you are. And we just don't want to hear it at twelve at night. That's the only problem really. If everything goes smoothly between the neighbors, if something can be worked out, noise wise, light wise, you know, I'm fine with it. And you know, power to you. I know it's a hard, hard job starting a business for my generation. So if something can be worked out, that'd be great.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other opposing testimony at this time? Up to the mic and state your name.
My name is John Dallas. Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to voice our concerns. Our property is adjacent to two fifty seven Roop Road to the north at five seventy Pinewood Lane. We purchased in two thousand and one. We have several concerns, many that you have heard already. The noise level is very loud. Firebrand has taken measures to lower the PA system. However, they can't lower the attendees enthusiastic voices cheering, singing and yelling. With the addition of the lodge, there will be additional noise. Not the everyday noise of a family going about their business, but a group of upwards of fifty people or more that could potentially be present from Friday evening through Sunday afternoon. They stated it would be seasonal only and mostly weekends. Their operating season is North Idaho's prime outdoor season, spring and summer. We work during the week, so we so weekends and evenings are when we like to enjoy our property that we have worked so hard for. Will there be an inside space in the lodge for these groups to gather after the venue? Or will they be in the outside common area? This is little to no buffer on their property line as it was logged several years ago. Their map shows a lodge mostly in the middle. However, the county GIS map shows the clearing much closer to the northern property line. The sound from groups will carry through our trees. The owner's home is at the far southern line, so they will most likely not hear the sounds as much as we and our neighbors will. Also, what restrictions are in place to govern the operating hours? My understanding is that conditional use permit stays within the with the property. What stops the next owner, what stops the next owners from running a retreat seven days a week? We agree property owners should be able to use their property as they see fit, but not to the detriment of their neighbors or community. Bottom line is this is a commercial retreat and a venue in a residential rural community. In our opinion, the retreat and venue will not enhance or economically stimulate the community as a whole. On the contrary, the operation retreat will diminish our surrounding property values. It is simply located in the wrong location. As we would like to sell our home in the coming years, the fact that it is adjacent to a commercial retreat and venue will negatively affect the sale and value of our property. Our property is our investment for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other opposing testimony at this time?
My name's Todd Walker. I live in the property uh adjacent to them. The Bergamot Drive, basically, uh, we have about a hundred acres. That was my son and my other son has a home there, too. It's been a family piece of property for many years. And it we have heard a lot of noise. It, we've even, my daughter-in-law has gone over and talked to him about the noise. They said, oh, we we'll quit doing it. We won't do it that late. The very next day it was loud and overnight after nine thirty. Um, my concern is that you're act, it's actually asking for a bar, a motel and a concert area. Because alcohol's, I I don't know if everybody would like a hundred people to have alcohol through the day and then drive by their house at night in these rural areas. I would like to say that our zoning right across the street is forest agricultural ten acre lot. It's very close to and and we have animals, horses, cows, dogs that uh music upsets. And we've been there. We came to our realtors asking where we can do have a livelihood. We live off our land, too. But we don't do it by bringing in people from outside the city or I keep hearing community. The community is Coca Lala. We don't get any money from motels or we have no motels. We have no uh rent out suits for the venues or anything. Uh, we don't have I don't think anybody that's getting married there is from Coca Lala. I'd have it in my yard because it's as pretty as they're saying their yard is. They've never come to even talk to me about their situation and what they do. They have no concern for their neighbors and their livelihood. They claim they do. But I haven't seen it. And uh, I just think that this is not the place for that type of venue. I do agree that people should get married and whatnot. But it's not a retreat. It's not a religious thing. A retreat is someplace that is not is spiritual and only daily.
Thank you. Any other opposing? Go ahead.
My name is Lio Beck and uh my wife and I
My name is Lio Beck and my wife and I live just to the east of Firebrand's property. So we're very acquainted with the situation. We've been living in this, the Coca-Cola area our entire lives. We got married in two thousand. Two thousand six, we found our location on loan out there. And built our, our dream home and in our dream location, much like they did. So we know. How much they love it here and. So, while we're glad that they're able to have successful business and we have nothing against you guys at all. They sound like amazing people and I'm certain that their clients are. Very happy with their experience. This simply just is not the right location for it. We're a rural, rural residential area. And their business disrupts what we came to live for their, the peace and privacy. We often like to do fire pits with our friends and family during the summer months. Those gatherings are now interrupted with music, M C's and D J's. We can hear the words to the songs and recognize the artists. And when the D J speaks, it sounds like we're at the county fair. While our property may or may not decrease in value, I can't tell you, but it certainly would make it harder to sell it. Nobody will want to live by the wedding venue. So as I already stated, this is not the proper location for this business. If it's permitted to continue, Firebrand will continue to grow. And do more weddings throughout the week. I would encourage you not to allow this business. To continue in this location. I hope they can find. An appropriate location for it to carry out their successful business. And allow us to continue enjoying our private and peaceful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other opposing testimony? Okay, so he'll be getting six minutes.
Am I allowed to play audio or? All I have is my phone. I couldn't upload anything.
You have a video or something you, I mean, something you want us to hear is what you're asking?
Yes, I have. So you can understand what everybody's referring to, so you can experience it because. A very lovely picture was painted for the people at the weddings, but for the surrounding residents, it's much different. So I guess I can begin with that.
Sure.
Do you want to start?
Did you already state your name for the record? I'm sorry.
Robert Johnson.
Thank you.
I am the directly adjoining property to the east. And this is. Clearly heard in our house, even over our own stereo TV, there's no escaping this. We can't sleep through it. My son can't sleep through it. He wakes up with nightmares constantly from this. He's afraid to be outside. People watching him. He wakes up all the time thinking people are watching him because people stand there and leer. They stop at the road and they leer. They come down our driveway. I had so much here to say, but. It's a very adverse impact to our quality of life because we're so close to all this and it's really just not possible to mitigate any of it. I don't wish anything ill against them, but I don't understand how they cannot. Know they're affecting people this badly. I have come over once while gathering information. To present and. Out of frustration, told them about the noise and everything, and then they claimed not to hear it or be aware of it. And they say, nobody's told us. So, it's not. They're not being honest about how they're operating and also about the times we get woken up constantly between. Six and seven A M as. People are setting up and beginning things and making deliveries and it lasts until sometimes midnight, their last event. Lights off at, I think it was somewhere between ten thirty and eleven and people were still up there with flashlights and headlights moving around and doing things until almost midnight. How can we sleep when this stuff is going on? And then when they turn around the next morning and start all over again. So we get maybe six, sometimes seven hours in between. And we're trying to sleep, wondering, is somebody out there lurking around? What are they doing? What are their intentions? This is not the right area for something like this. And it does not make us feel safe. I understand that the people that frequent there have a great time because they're partying, but it's very unruly. I, is that my three minutes or six?
Is that?
That's three.
He has three more. Yep.
So. We don't just hear the music, we hear continuous disruption from maintenance, from vendors, from cars, from people. From, and this is off our patio as well. Sorry, it's. It's skipping between the videos. My apologies. It's right off our back patio. And the volumes I'm playing here are nowhere near what it is in real life. We can't have our kid out there listening to this new behavior. We can't sit out there and enjoy anything. You can't feel safe or comfortable, not knowing these people's intentions. I also would like to talk about the fact that we had to put cardboard in our windows because the industrial lighting was so bright. It's impossible to sleep at night. I understand it sounds like they may try to change that, but. It's extremely disruptive and. Mentally, physically exhausted. We think all the time to get away from this. Should we go to a motel? But then we're afraid to leave our house because we don't know what's going to happen. The previous house, people were letting unseated people in next door. We got broke into thirty thousand dollars worth of damage. We're afraid the same thing's going to happen again. We don't know these people, where they're coming from, what they're doing. I can't tell you how many times we've walked out and people are sitting on the road staring at us. So I shut the garage door down. Are they looking at my tools, motorcycles? I don't need this kind of. Risk placed upon us by this. I mean, in the end, this is. I don't fault people like everybody else was saying for trying to start a business. I applaud them for that and for hard work, but at the same time. It's a commercial business in a rural residential area. It, it, even as a commercial business. It doesn't meet standards for noise, light, glare, dust, smoke, odor, vibration, hours of operation. A lot of the things they state, they don't follow. We have this all well documented for hours. So much I want to say. This is all, basically, we've, the surrounding residents, this is forced on us. We spent two years prepping this property and. Getting ready to build and we were. Half to two thirds of the way through the build and committed before we even found out this was going on. So this was just sprung on us. We would have never even considered. Keeping the property had we known. This is it. And we were told by a realtor, this is a tough situation and that would be very, very hard to market. They don't think there's anything they could do that. For us, because we're so close to it, it's right on top of us.
And just so you know, I, I have looked over the comments that you submitted also online.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else with opposing testimony that they'd like to present?
Hi. Pull this up on my phone. Hi, my name is Sierra Walker. My husband and I live at thirty nine fourteen Coca-Cola Loop. So I am Forrest's sister-in-law, Todd's daughter-in-law. And our chief concern is the noise. It has been, it's been a lot. It's hard when I try to put my kids down to sleep at night to listen to the banging of the bass and the D J. Between my in-laws, all of us, we own like a collective amount of like ninety-five acres. And I've gone to various points throughout the property and I. Just tried to see if we can hear. And I can hear it all the way down at the bottom of Loop Road. So, I mean, that's, that's a lot of acreage in between the property and I understand sound carries and. Everything, but it just seems to be too much. Hayden and I, my husband Hayden, we went over and spoke to you guys and you guys are super nice, by the way. You're very friendly and everything and we voiced our concerns about the noise. But the same day there was a wedding there and that was the same day I went down to the bottom of Loop Road and I could hear. The sound. I mean, it's, it's really loud. And they did tell us too that they have made effort to decrease the sound, but. I mean, like I said, that same night we went down there and we could hear it. And then every weekend after that, we could still hear it. It didn't seem to get any better. A couple weddings before that, it, it did seem to be a little better, like in July, it was a little better, at least we thought so. But everything after that has been hard to deal with. Hayden and I are also concerned about the amount of traffic and the types of people it is bringing to our community. Last year, we had poachers on our property that shot a deer. I go all over our property with my kids and. I don't like the thought of people coming on to it and thinking, hey, this might be a good spot to. Hunt, you know, just the increased traffic is concerning. I mean, I do applaud them for starting a business and I think it's a great business idea. I just don't think it's right for where we live. I feel. Terrible for all the even closer neighbors than us that they have to. Listen to the noise. I know a lot of neighbors have small children like myself and. It's just, it, it's hard. So, that's.
Well, I have a second. Can I just ask your opinion?
Yeah.
If it was just a retreat and not the wedding, how would you feel about that?
You know, the increased volume of traffic and the types of people that would be coming, it's still concerning. I mean, I guess the noise and the traffic go hand in hand for, for us. Okay, so, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other, oh, please go ahead. Thank you guys for giving me a minute to write notes.
Hello, my name is Drew Holberson and I live on Coca-Cola Loop. So our family moved to North Idaho this year just to, to enjoy kind of an unmatched outdoor lifestyle and get away from it all. We came from Western Washington. And we, we've got four children, just really believe Idaho is the place to raise them up. And. You know, we, we were hoping we'd be able to sit outside on a, on a summer evening and take it all in and. During the warmer months, however, we're, whether we're. Out on the deck, watching the kids play or even inside the living room with the window shut and the door shut, we can hear every song, Clearest Day. All the D J announcements and. I use some mapping software to draw a line from our home to where the events are held. And we're roughly five hundred yards, that's fifteen hundred feet through timber and everything, we can still hear it. It was not disclosed to us. That there was a wedding venue, two properties over when we were under contract. Had it been mentioned, it might have been a deal breaker. Just knowing how, how important it was and still is to us. To enjoy a, you know, simple and peaceful life in, in rural Idaho. To touch on some of the other comments that were made, we do have legitimate concerns that down the road, should we decide to sell our property? We might, we might have trouble finding a buyer. When we have to disclose that during the entire spring and summer that they might have to. You know, two, three nights a week, be forced to listen to loud wedding music and cheering and D J announcements. And then also, we, we have a low producing well. I actually ran out of water, water one time, just using my sprinkler for too long. And I have concerns about the, the added strain to the water table in the area during these events. And what would happen if we start running out of water? When we otherwise wouldn't because of added strain on it. I also want to touch on just that. I love that in the United States, we can be entrepreneurs and make a life for ourselves. It's something I strive to accomplish for my family. I don't want to stifle one's ability to chase their dreams and make a living. But that being said, when one person's business is affecting. Multiple neighbors' ability to enjoy their property. That's, it becomes a problem at that point. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opposing testimony?
Hi, my name is Christie Sambs. Good afternoon. My husband and I own property directly northeast. And we border the Firebrand. We're here today to voice concerns of the wedding venue. The first and most prevalent. Concern is the noise. It isn't just a short nuisance that is annoying and then goes away in a few minutes. This is a noise that begins in the early afternoon and escalates louder as the night goes on. It lasts for several hours late into the night and occurs several times throughout the week. The events aren't just occasional get-togethers, which would be expected. With neighbors having fun with friends and family, but it's incessant throughout the summer. When we are outside trying to enjoy our property. The reason that we purchased our property fifteen years ago. Was for the reasons that most people did, for the quiet, the isolation, the peace. That it provides. A second concern is the amount of people that the venue can accommodate. With current attendance approximately of two hundred guests, that's a lot of people to contain. The property boundaries are unmarked. We've walked our property, so we know that it's not marked. We just see our own survey tape up from years ago when we purchased. It would be nice if the venue could work to mark property lines to make guests aware of their borders. We are concerned about people wandering off and not knowing when they're going on to somebody else's property. We are also concerned about the fire danger. There have been fireworks observed being shot off at the venue during the hot, dry summer months. I know that the Firebrand website states that they do not allow the fireworks. But unfortunately, the guests must bring it to add flair to their celebration. If a fire were to start, it would be of little consequence to the guests as they could just get in their vehicles and head back to their homes. It would however, be a big significant impact to the Coca-Cola. Community to deal with the possible loss of homes, property, as well as the loss of the forest. Lastly, thinking about the future development of cabins and a lodge that would accommodate forty-six overnight guests. A new well being drilled with the low producing aquifer is concerning. Current residents in the area are familiar with the low producing wells. And many have invested thousands of dollars adding cisterns to ensure that they have adequate water supply for their families. Adding an additional fifty-six people is comparable to ten more families. This will undoubtedly have an impact on the aquifer. This will put an additional financial burden on the residents of Coca-Cola as they try to establish a solution. For this important natural resource. In closing, we want to respect all of our neighbors and their desires. They have to enjoy the land that they purchased. And pursue your goals and dreams. Homeownership is the single and largest, most expense for most of us in our whole lifetimes. The ability to enjoy that investment for years to come should be everyone's goals. In the Coca-Cola community, the natural environment is being impacted in a way that has threatened. Many of people's enjoyments for their families. We hope that we can come to a sensible solution. That will enable everybody to continue to enjoy the area that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other opposing testimony? All right, so at this time, oh, sorry, is there anyone in the audience who didn't sign up to speak that would like to enter comments into the record at this time? I already got those guys. Okay, at this time, yeah, I think you have a chance to rebut the comments that you've heard. And you can do it up there or there.
I'm just to kind of reiterate, I just tried to jot down as many notes as possible and. I think that um, we are being painted in a different uh, way. Um, we let one neighbor kind of stop us from reaching out to other neighbors because that happened very early on. Um, the comments about feeling unsafe. Um, we feel that in our own home. My son and I don't walk the ridge as often. Um, I am, so for me, I let one person a year and a half ago make me afraid to reach out to other neighbors. One, we didn't realize that we needed to um, to receive the CUP. We thought that they were made aware. Um, but obviously again, twenty twenty, um, what we state, we, we will do. I am a teacher. I was a teacher. I always will be. And to have these guidelines is a relief to me because it gives me a point to reach. Um, I understand noise. I understand this and again, I want what we posted and what we say that we are going to do, um, we will. Um, and we will have a date um, that we have to in order to continue to provide for those twenty couples. Um, noise ordinance, we don't host anything. If you're hearing something past ten o'clock as far as noise or not noise, music, that is not us. So we do not have noise or music after that point. Um, there are lots of people that play music when they're working on their cars or whatever, we hear it too. Um, but that is not us. Um, PAs are not allowed as we stated in our, our uh, presentation at the lodge. Um, we, uh, let's see, indoor area, John Dallas mentioned that. Um, and yes, the lodge will be large um, to where after the wedding, they are expected to be in their accommodations. Um, we, we're not gonna let them, you know, party until later on. That ten o'clock ordinance is going to be in place. Um, again, we were just told by planning to write down our dreams and our dreams was, is to have that lodging. And so it was kind of one of those, well, we need to figure out, you know, what this actually looks like for us. Um, and so we will have proper, you know, um, permits for, for those things. Um, trespassing, um, we did mention that um, in our presentation, we are going to get it um, staked and what's it called, surveyed um, the rest of the way. Again, we just did the one immediate to us because um, of personal concern for our safety. Um, five acre part, so with the additional wells, um, that is, we're only gonna have them there two nights, um, and forty people. Um, if we were to parcel our land out, five acre parcels, there would be more wells. And that's not what we want to do. We are going to stay on this land for as long, we're gonna be on this land forever. Um, this is my for, my forever spot. Um, odor, I don't, I don't know what odor it is. Um, trying to think. Ooh, we don't want to grow. Let's see, we are, um, Lyle brought up growing into some bigger enterprise. We are mom and shop, mom and pop shop. Um, the CUP is clear as to what we are allowed to do and um, we are going to follow the, the CUP. Um, and I do feel like with animals and with a DJ that is respectful. Um, I, I can't speak to every DJ that we have. Um, there are DJs that we won't ever have out because of personal whoa, like you are obviously not listening to us. Um, in the, the video that you couldn't hear, you can hear my, oh my gosh, that's too loud. Please have him turn this down. Um, some DJs turn it down and then as you're walking away, they turn it back up. And so other than touching their equipment and turning it down, um, this is where we are going to hire our own DJ to where we are paying them and they're reputable. Um, and so I really feel like with that um, being stated, um, we do have young ones. We're planning to expand our family. We live on the land. Um, and we want to litigate that noise as best as possible and we are finding lots of different ways. My, my Amazon cart is full, my, everything is full of ways to help mitigate sound, um, because that's our biggest concern. And um, again, we apologize. Honestly, we were gonna come out talking about community and it not being for the community. We wanted to do a uh, community event for Kokalala and I was gonna come out to planning to talk to you about how to send out an invitation in August. And we received our violation in June or July. And so, um, we do plan to host an event to thank the community for being a part of it. The lodge is meant to be something where in the off season Kokalala community can utilize that for wreath making classes, candle class, like all the things you see on the Facebook. Again, only if it's wanted and i- if not, it'll sit vacant for all winter and will start up in the summer. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna close the hearing to public testimony. And it's okay if you guys, I want to take a five minute break. Yes, please, some recess at this time. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back together here or the hearing back together. Okay, um, so Jake, you were gonna kind of go over what my options are at this point for me. Okay.
In the, so Jake, the planning director, so in Title twelve, chapter one gives the authority for the planning or for the hearing examiner to make decisions on conditional use permits, which is what we're here for today. She has the option at this point to take up to five days to make a decision so that that decision is gonna be rendered in writing. So it'll be a written formal decision signed by Jackie. Um, she could make a verbal decision today. That decision could be approved uh, as written. It could be approved with additional conditions of approval added based on the evidence she was presented today. Um, and if she feels the staff report didn't provide enough conditions of approval to mitigate the the effects of this conditional use per, permit proposal has on the surrounding areas. Um, the other option is to deny the project uh, with some specific conclusions. Um, or you can recommend or make the decision to send this file to the zoning commission for further hearing. That zoning commission is a volunteer board of five individuals that make decisions typically on, on zone changes, but they've also uh, made decisions on subdivision files and others and they have that ability uh, to hold additional hearing. The hearing would likely be scheduled for next month. They meet once a month rather than twice a month like Jackie does. They don't have the, nearly the volume that she does for file load, so.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna take my five days um, to deliberate over this before I make a decision. And then I will notify them in the right, in writing.
Yeah, so, so you can draft up your decision, um, and then it'll come from the planning department. It'll go out to the applicant. We also post it on our website underneath the file. So this is CUP thirteen twenty-three, so it'll be decision letter for uh, hearing examiner decision letter.
Okay, and so in that the time or in that decision letter, as Jake stated, there's, I have several options of either opposing, approving, I mean, denying, approving, or sending it on to the zoning. And so I'm gonna take some time with this because there's definitely a lot going on and um, I don't want to just make a decision with all of this that has been thrown at me at once. So, because there's a lot of people to consider in this. Okay? Is that about how I?
Yep, and it's five business days, not.
Yeah.
The weekends don't count.
Because I'm not working on the weekend. Sorry. Oh, oh, yeah.
Oh, Monday is a holiday, yeah.
Oh, yay, I can imagine. Okay. Sorry, not to put you guys off, but I just, I need that time. There was a lot to look through.
So you would just uh, yeah, close the hearing.
Okay.
With that decision.
Okay, so and that's, and I can close the file.
Close the file.
Okay, okay, so at this time, I'm going to close file CUP zero zero one three dash two three and I will be taking the five business days to deliberate before I make my decision. Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, schedule reminders, updates, announcements. Oh, and just so you guys know, we're still in a meeting, so if you guys can quiet, walk out. I would appreciate it.
So we have um, made some significant progress in our comp plan updates for the public services. Um, we're gonna hold a public workshop on the seventeenth of October.
Okay.
Um, if you want to take a look at that, the, the draft will be, will be um, placed online here this week.
Okay.
And then natural resources, we are going to do a public work session. Um, not this on the seventeenth, but on the first, first meeting in November, I believe. I think we're pending some additional data that Swatty's gonna collect. So. You want to just close one of the doors? We have a, we have a code amendment that doesn't really affect um, the code for you right now. And that code amendment, uh, the final hearing with the board is gonna be the eleventh of this month, October eleventh.
Okay.
I want to say eleven to twelve, something along those lines. So, but it, it's just a, it's kind of a housekeeping code, code change. It's not a, it's not gonna change any CUPs or VAs or anything like that. The planning commission has also been working on an amendment to the vacation rental ordinance. Um, that would affect uh,
Yeah.
one of the changes that they've asked me to, to draft up. Is taking out the CUP clause in the short term rental code or the vacation rental codes. Right now, it's after you hit twenty people, then you have to apply for a conditional use permit.
Oh, okay.
So, there's been some other ordinances every view that have a, what's, they have a, like a minor and a major, so they have uh, your typical the, vacation rental permit and then they have a high occupancy vacation rental permit. So I've crafted that language into it. So they have just a couple extra standards for a higher occupancy, so it takes up the CUP trigger. So you won't see any, if that gets approved by the board, uh, you won't see any of those CUPs in the future.
Okay.
I don't think you've ever seen one. We've only ever approved one CUP for a occupancy of over twenty. Um, it was a lake frontage, large lake frontage home, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that include the Airbnbs?
That's what it is.
That is what it is, right?
Short term rentals is any, any like vacation rentals or rent, rentals of property that are thirty days or less.
Oh, wow.
By state statute, so. It's a protected property right in state statute under local land use planning act. So the, the local municipalities have the ability to craft ordinances to help regulate it if they want to. Um, there's only a couple counties that actually regulate short term rentals.
Wow.
And we are one of the lucky ones, so.
And we're not one of them, is that?
We, we are definitely one of the lucky ones that regulates it, so. Uh, Cootin County doesn't regulate it.
Seriously.
Like no, nobody, sorry, sarcasm. Uh, nobody in North Idaho regulates short term rentals uh, on a county level other than Bonner County. So Boundary, Cootin, Shoshone, Idaho County. None of them have it. So it's hard to find like comparable ordinances to review it against. Most of them are cities like City of Coeur d'Alene, City of Sandpoint, uh, City of McCall. They all have short term rental codes, but they're much smaller in scale. And they, they deal with different problems because their densities are far different than.
Oh, yeah. Oh, wow, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, there's only three building codes, three counties with no building codes in Idaho and that's Idaho County, Bonner and Boundary. And we're the only one of those three that have a short term rental code. So it's inherently more difficult to regulate when you look at like.
Right.
Yeah, no building code for inspection of, of how a structure is being made. So it's, it's been a lot of.
Wow, and how they all intertwine with each other. Yeah, so, man.
That's why we have seven people on that, on the planning commission, so they can come up with the best product, right? Um, the province or subdivision was approved by the board this week, so that was a hearing on Monday. It was a uh, decision by a two-one vote. The only thing they added, so we added a number of conditions of approval and, and a, a far lengthier analysis after your hearing. And then again, after the zoning commission hearings, what do you, her staff report ended up being like forty-two pages long. So it was a very big file with a lot of uh, detail and analysis that went into it. Um, so the board did make uh, a change on the fire access easement to have it be widened to sixty feet.
Okay.
Um, they're actually up meeting, uh, we're gonna be meeting with the developer here shortly to kind of talk through how to, how to accomplish that.
Yeah.
And adjust the preliminary plan, so.
Was there a lot of?
There actually, there wasn't as many as I expected there to be. There's about as many we had today. Um, as far as volume of people and the meeting was actually probably shorter than this meeting was.
Wow.
I was kind of surprised. Zoning commission had a lot more people in attendance, maybe it was the time of day.
Yeah, could be.
Um, I think that's all there. Did I miss any other update? The short term rental software was approved. It doesn't really affect your, your position, so we're working through the implementation of that.
Okay.
That's about all we got.
Sounds like fun.
Still have the same employees. No one's quitting yet, so that's good.
Oh, good guys, good, good, good. Stick around.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all right. Then if there's nothing else, then we, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.